Sandry Lane and 2927 Dexter Lane.
All right, we'll hear from RPA staff first?
Sure, this is case 2025-96. This is a rezoning request to rezone from A1 Agricultural District to R1 Single Family or Single Unit Detached Residential Subdivision. Size of the property is three and a half acres. Number of units proposed is 16. It's a density of 4.4 dwelling units per acre. There's been no zoning history on this property. To the north is R1 that was rezoned from A1 and R2 in 2000. To the south and east is agriculture, A1 zones. And to the west is R2. This currently contains a single wide manufactured home on it. To the north and west is single family subdivisions. To the south is manufactured home. And to the east or to the right of the picture is large lots, single unit homes on large lots. This is a view of the site and it contains a single wide manufactured home. This is a view of the site. This is Sandry Lane, which is a county road that goes into this property. Another view of the site. This is a view north of the site, which is again a single family subdivision. Southwest of the site, single family home. Another view of the site, again, this is Sandry Lane. Another view of Sandry Lane, you see it's very narrow. It's a county maintained road, but it's very narrow going back to this development. This property is in the Wild Oak Mountain area plan, which was adopted in 2019. The place type recommendation is suburban residential, which recommends primary uses being single unit detached dwellings. Here's a closer view of that place type for this property. Here's the site plan that submitted with the request. You can see it's coming off one entrance off Sandry Lane with a cul-de-sac of 16 lots. Staff reviewed this, the request for single unit detached residential is compatible with adjacent land uses and development form of the area. Developing under this current zoning will require widening of Sandry Lane, again, which is very narrow, so it has to be widened to meet county standards of a public road. There do appear to be large trees and like a detached garage in the right of way that will be impacted by this widening. The current zoning as zoned, which is A1, it has a little part of R1 on it, would allow roughly nine housing units gross as of today. The applicant has proposed development of 16 dwelling units, which is almost double what's permitted by the zone today. Does require sewer approval. There is an easement next door to this property. It is providing sewer to this property, but I don't know that WWTA has officially permitted 16 lots. The current Wild Oak Mountain Plan recommends a density of three to five dwelling units per acre. But the plan was adopted in 2020. After 2020, may remember, the R1 zone was changed to allow smaller lots of 6,000 square feet. The proposed density in lot sizes allowed in R1 will change the rule of development of this area along Sandry Lane and Dexter Lane. It's actually one road, but it has two different names. Staff recommended to now and develop it under A1. So staff recommended to deny. At Planning Commission, there was no opposition. Planning Commission felt the request would be compatible with adopted plan. You do have adjacent similar single family subdivisions to what was being proposed. So Planning Commission recommended to approve, subject to one condition. Improvement up to 20 feet of Sandry Lane where Sandry Lane borders the property being developed. So widen the road in front of what this property owner owns to make it meet county road standards. So this recommendation comes to this body with approved with one condition. I answer any questions y'all may have.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Does anybody have any questions for staff before we hear from the applicant?
Highlander.
Commissioner Highlander.
Thanks, sir. What is the width now of Sandry Lane?
Maybe the applicant can speak to it. It's probably 16 to 18 feet, or maybe Nathan would know offhand. We haven't really measured that, but it doesn't meet county road standards.
Would it be up to 20? Would it meet county road standards for the full length of Sandry Lane or just in front of that property?
Just in front of what the property owners owns. We discussed that at Planning Commission. I think we've tried to get it the entire length. It's not, it's not clear if we can do that legally interstate. Because this property owner doesn't own that property. You're dealing with other property owners.
Okay, I just look.
That's challenging.
I have several in my area that are very, very difficult to traverse, and I'm worried about 16 homes, 32 plus the ones already there getting through a 15, 16 foot road, but I, I'll lean on your expertise.
Right, and if developed currently, as it's currently zoned with nine lots, through the subdivision planning process, the developer will be required to widen it anyway.
Okay, thank you.
No other lights? No lights. Is the applicant present? Hey, if you want to come up, state your name and address for the record, please. You'll have a few minutes.
Morning Commissioners, Joseph Ingram, Ingram Gore and Associates. This is, this is a unique piece of property because we all know that WWTA's kind of got everybody locked down, and this just happens to be in that hole. We have, we have the tap. I've got the letter for approval of the taps here. This property is surrounded by R1 property. So as part of our plan, and one of the notes we provided, we are going to give another 20 feet of right of way in front of our property because there's only 30 feet in front of that property. So we're going to give the whole 20 feet, but widen that. And then I think, I think I would offer to the Commissioners that we would actually come down and widen Sandry Lane, the kind of run of north, south. Dexter Lane is, I'd say Dexter Lane is at the edge of being meeting standard. Sandry there, you get, where it turns, you can see right there, you see Dexter when it makes that turn to the north. That's where Sandry gets, and there's room for me to do something. A lot of the other ones, Brian's right there, where they people have got, people are right up on the road. I mean, there's buildings in the right of way. So I mean, it's, so I think we could, we could, we could widen, we could, we could do, give the right of way widen. And then this is, this is a local guy. This isn't, this is a national tract builder. This is a local guy that builds 30 to 40 houses a year. All those people are local, the money stay in local. This is, this is a guy that builds a, you know, kind of a quality home. I mean, it would be the same as what surrounds it. I just, I think it's just, it's an opportunity to do something without going out into the farms in the, in the county. This is something in the city, and we, like I said, we're given the right of way. I think we'll, we propose to widen that, that piece of the road. I think it's, I think it's a good project. Any questions?
Have you been in touch with Commissioner Hilton? Have you guys had any community meetings regarding?
We had, we didn't have anybody really come up and with any, any questions about it. The biggest, the biggest thing we had is the, my client bought it, and I think the people that sold it were sort of surprised that, you know, because the sewer wasn't available. We, we found access to the sewer, and they were surprised we were developing. I think that kind of caught them by surprise.
Commissioner Highlander.
Thanks, sir. I, I'll tell you, I very much appreciate the fact that you said it's going to be a local developer. I think the people that have boots on the ground here in our county, I appreciate that very much. Maybe this is a question for Brian. He alluded the fact that people are building on the county right of way. I mean, how much right of way do we have there, you know?
50 on Dexter, according to applicant here.
We do have 50?
I don't know if they're building on the right of way.
The county does.
Those are existing homes. We can look at the county book, see what the right of way is, but I don't know what the right of way is still there.
It's kind of concerning for me if someone's building on the county right of way, but...
They probably have yours past because it's very narrow. Go back to, if I got aerial view of this.
Well, thank you for dealing, for being local, a local developer. I appreciate local developers very much. Thank you.
Yes, he's, no other lights for staff. Is anyone here in opposition that would like to speak in regards to this particular case? I see none.
Mr. Chairman, applicant did mention widening Sandry Lane down to Dexter. If that's the will of this body, we need to probably amend that condition because it only states to be widened in front of what he owns. So I can give this commission drex, I can add an alternate version to the agenda for next week.
Okay.
With that language being added.
Sounds like a great idea. All right. See no other lights. Thank you, sir. We'll take that up next week and...
Mr. Chairman, we have two other items, an ADU order, a resolution, and a park and rec. You know, those were deferred almost a year now, waiting on Plan Hamilton. Staff officially requests these to be withdrawn.
Okay.
At this time, then come back after Plan Hamilton is adopted, bring those back for this body.
If, if there's no objection, we'll just officially just withdraw those two resolutions? All right, okay.
Mr. Chairman, I have one other thing. Karen Rennick would like just a couple minutes to talk about Plan Hamilton, I think. She looked shocked. I thought she was going to come up and talk about it. She looked shocked back there. She'll be brief.
We might not have communicated clearly on that. Yes, we do understand that Planning Hamilton is coming back to Planning Commission, and do you want to coordinate on that? So we do have a series of ideas that we'll be coordinating with the county on and with Commissioner Chauncey, just to make sure we're moving forward clearly, without any surprises. And so we'll be working on that in the next few weeks. We've been given some guidance to work through, so we will work on clearly communicating where we are heading to Planning Commission and what is happening at Planning Commission, and then coming out of Planning Commission. So we would like to offer the opportunity to anyone who would like to meet with Brian and I one-on-one. We're happy to do that, and we'll provide a listing of times we can come to you, we can meet virtually, whatever works for you, just so we're able to answer any questions prior to the next Planning Commission. Thank you.
Karen? Commissioner Mackey?
Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Ms. Rennick, Brian, when you all meet and people want to slow growth, will you ask them if that was their property and government was telling them that even though they are abiding by the rules and law and paying taxes, would they want government to stop them from cashing in on their property? Would you ask them?
We try, so Plan Hamilton in our conversation is really about growth based on infrastructure and desired approach moving forward for the county. So we do try to broaden that discussion, so yes.
But you will ask them. Whoever says they don't want to see, they want government to stop somebody from developing their property, you will ask them if it was them, would they want to see government come in?
Yes, planning is about a balance of private property rights and that overall vision for county growth.
Wait a minute. Private property is private property.
That's correct.
And you want a joint decision, an outsider plus a homeowner?
So we are developing a land use plan for the physical development of the county. So that discussion involves that, hopefully that informed decision, all that data we have in the plan. And then that is the discussion for, the plan is that vision for the county for it to move forward on physical development.
You know, Ms. Rennick, again, I, I know these men here are tired of hearing me say this, but I'm about small government, and I don't like government telling private people what to do with their land.
And so the plan does, one of the main uses of the plan, or one of the ways we use the plan, is to inform zoning decisions. So that zoning decisions are only by County Commission. County Commission is the only group that can change zoning. So this is giving guidance to County Planning Commission, Staff Planning Commission, a developer, a property owner for that, but those decisions, final decisions are by County Commission. We always enforce that.
The, the people you work with, are they pro-growth people?
Do you mean staff?
Staff.
I think staff is well informed about the role of being a planner for Hamilton County.
Generally, what percentage of the time do they support growth? 30%?
So we do have a, we do kind of keep track. Brian does a good report at the end of the year on staff recommendations. We do present that to Planning Commission of what is the staff recommendation for each type of zone? What is the Planning Commission recommendation? What would be the legislative body? We do keep track of that, and I can share that with you, and that might give you a better, more, it's a, you know, it's a quantitative.
If you would, share with the whole commission.
I will.
Because if people don't want to grow and develop, those same people will be here next year fighting a tax increase.
I will pull the last couple years of reports and send those.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Mackey. Thank you, Karen. We got one more. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Congratulations on the interim.
Thank you.
Position, first of all.
Thank you.
I just saw that. That's exciting. I just wanted to shed a little light. I, I don't disagree with Commissioner Mackey. I mean, property rights are important. Density is important in protect, in the effort to preserve green space in our communities and provide housing that meets the needs of our community. All those things are important. I understand there's some balance that takes place. I just want to make a little, a clarifying comment here. Oftentimes, you know, we have staff in these meetings that come up and, and present various arguments or positions or directions. And, and, and that's, that's your job to do those types of things. But ultimately, it's up to the elected officials to make those decisions. Right? So we can hear from, from various staff positions, staff individuals, various positions, and that's what they're here to do. But ultimately, when we make decisions, when decisions are made, regardless as to what it is, it's the elected officials that do those. Oftentimes, I feel that, you know, staff fall on the sword, for lack of a better term. But it's, it's these elected bodies that make those decisions ultimately. And I just wanted to clarify that, and, and congratulations, Karen.
Thank you.
Hope you, hope you like the role. We'll stick around. Thank you, Chairman.
Commissioner Highlander. Mr. Highlander?
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Rennick, thank you. I appreciate, I, I think that they've made a good choice for the interim position here, and you'll do well. I want, and I appreciate Dr. Mackey's comments. I mean, I really do. I really do. And, but in conjunction with that, I, I'd like to say, I feel like you all have been neutral. You have tried to follow the rules and the law and present us what the rules are and the law are so that we can make our executive decision. And I want to thank you for your neutrality and for your businesslike manner that you've done. Thank you so much, and bless you for it.
Thank you for the feedback.
Hey, thank you for shining on the lights. Thank you, Karen. I'll definitely be scheduling some time to talk to you. Are you, are y'all going to be bringing it up at next month's agenda at all, just for discussion?
We can, and we would appreciate the guidance.
I didn't know if it was, I don't, I read the agenda, but I don't think it's on there.
It is, it is not on the, it is not on the July Planning Commission agenda. Plan Hamilton is not on the July.
Public know and fellow Commissioners know if we are going to be discussing it next week at all?
It is not on the agenda for discussion. We want to be a little bit more prepared.
Perfect.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. That's all I have, Commissioners. Thank you for letting us jump in front of finance. Commissioner Smith?
Before we go into that, let's, let's do the building economics. Ms. Karen, Ms. Rennick, thank you, because you don't have to come up here. I just want to say something publicly, and if you agree, do thumbs up. So many times, we shoot the messenger, and I think you did a great job. So I know your, your job is to remain neutral in this. I know you push back on me personally, saying no on things, so thank you for what you do, and congratulations, Jan Tamroll. Okay. So you mind if we do the zoning, or the planning, or the building and economic 725-24? Can we read that into record, please?
Resolution 725-24, a resolution to approve the firm of HK Architects for the design of Brainerd High School renovations and additions and utilize a construction manager-at-risk procurement process and contract for the construction.
Okay. So this is for the Brainerd High School renovation. So, Mr. Beck, I think you were involved in that, is that correct?
Completed that process and handed those, handed those recommendations to the mayor, and we're looking forward to the group that he chose to, to do this work.
Okay. See no lights, no one up for comments, so we'll take this up next week. From now until finance.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Madam Clerk, let's start with 725-15, please.
Resolution 725-15, a resolution to allocate the use of proceeds from the 2024 A bond issue of up to $1 million for various community recreation projects.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor, would you like to make a few comments on this? It's kind of exciting to get this money back out into the community for these projects.
Yeah, that's right. This is the first four of the community small town park grants that you all have been involved in. Chairman Eversaw and I helped Matt Foles determine some rules and guidelines, if you will. And then I think almost all of you have been in conversations with small towns in your respective commission districts. And the first four participants, so the City of Lakeside, the Town of Lookout Mountain, whose mayor is here, Mayor Jones, and City of Saudi Daisy. You can imagine Gino jumped into action to make sure that Saudi Daisy took care of, or took advantage of this opportunity. And then the same with the Town of Walden, where just a few days ago, Commissioner Baker and I were on a call with the mayor of the Town of Walden. They've all done a great job. They've taken different approaches, which was kind of our goal, right? I mean, these small towns all provide a lot of value. They provide a lot of value to people who live in other towns and who live in unincorporated areas, and many of these towns are surrounded by unincorporated areas. And, but, you know, ultimately leaving some of the decision-making authority to the local officials. And I think it's a great example. We've tried to do this all across county government. To me, it's a great example of doing small things well. You, you look at some of the things that are being addressed to these four matching grant opportunities, and it's small things that make a big difference to people who live in Hamilton County. All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Sharp?
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. I just wanted to note that, you know, I appreciate the effort to invest in some small communities. Not all small communities have $250,000 laying around to drop on a project at a moment's notice. And I'm sure they, the others in our community, like the City of Red Bank, are working diligently to find a way to take advantage of a quarter million dollar investment into their, their towns. So, thank you, Chairman.
Well, and to clarify, there was no requirement that you have to put up $250,000. So, and that, that guidance has been given clearly. We've given a flexible timeline, several different admission, moments over the next year. We don't want these applications coming in at any time, so we've created certain dates where deadlines, where we hope that we can bring them before y'all in an orderly fashion. But the small towns know that if they want to bring forward a $50,000 project, and then at the next opportunity, another $50,000 project, they can, they can do that. We've provided quite a bit of flexibility because the end goal here was just to make good things happen across Hamilton County.
Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, Mr. Mayor, you said that better probably than I can. I, I was just going to say that it's not the municipalities that have $250,000 laid around. It's, it's a two-to-one grant. So to get the $250,000 or up to $250,000, they have to have up to $125,000 match. So it really makes it really 325.
I should clarify there that that, the guidance that we gave is that that was true for the smallest municipalities. The larger small towns, if you will, it was a one-to-one. So here you've got, and the threshold was 5,000. It's a pretty clear threshold here that you've got a few really small towns still have park features and play an important role in our county. But then we did determine that be it College Dale, Red Bank, Saudi Daisy, East Ridge, that a one-to-one match was more realistic and appropriate.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And I just wanted to say that this is a great opportunity for the Town of Lookout Mountain, which I represent. This is a great opportunity for the Town of Lookout Mountain to get some much-needed improvements done to their recreation and, and their community. They're pretty well, their recreation is very small because of the size of their community and the size of their park, but they do a lot of great things there, and there's got a lot of people that really use it. So this is a golden opportunity for them to partner with us to get more done. And let's face it, I mean, they're all Hamilton County taxpayers too. So I just wanted to thank my colleagues for this opportunity because this is going to go, I know the Town of Lookout Mountain has far more needs than what this will cover, but this is a huge dent in trying to get things done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Baker?
Yeah, I'm looking out, seeing Mariah Prescott with the Town of Walden. I just wanted to say thank you. She went over the list. It's quite extensive, and it's, and it's pretty cool. So I just wanted to thank you for your time and, and the detail that y'all put into your application. Thanks.
All right, seeing no further lights. Mr. Mayor, thank you again for putting this together and Chairman, and allowing these municipalities that are smaller that, that have these project needs to do something for parks in their communities is, is really amazing. So very thankful that Lakeside was also selected in, in my district, and we're excited to see what they're able to do. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Commissioner Graham, sorry.
I'm sorry. Is there any need for the representatives from their towns? Is there any need for them to be here next week to answer questions? I mean, I'm sure they don't mind, but it's, it's a lot on them to, to be here. Is there any reason?
It's up to them.
I mean, is there any reason that my fellow Commissioners would need them here?
Nope.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. All right, Madam Clerk, I see no further lights. Let's move on. 725-16, please.
Resolution 725-16, a resolution authorizing the county mayor to sign a contract in the amount of $60,000 with the City of Chattanooga for the Hamilton County Court's Community Service Program with a term beginning July 1st, 2025, and ending June 30th, 2026.
No lights, moving on. 725-17, please.
Resolution 725-17, a resolution authorizing the Sheriff's Office to apply and accept a grant from the Tennessee Statewide School Resource Officer Grant Program with details to be provided at a later date.
Thank you, ma'am. Same, same as usual, Ram, same thing? Okay. Year over year. Thank you. No further questions. Madam Clerk, moving on. 725-18, please.
Resolution 725-18, a resolution with the intent to apply for a grant for the humane transport of patients from the mental health transport program for the Hamilton County Sheriff's Office.
Thank you, ma'am. Ram, I understand this is the same as what we've, we've done before. We just don't know the amounts yet, correct? Okay. Thank you, sir. Still seeing no more lights. Madam Clerk, let's move on. 725-19, please.
Resolution 725-19, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division, operating as the Hamilton County Health Department, to sign a continuation contract with the Tennessee Department of Health in the amount of $338,600 to provide tuberculosis control services in Hamilton County for a time period of July 1st, 2025, through June 30th, 2026.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. No lights. 725-20, please.
Resolution 725-20, a resolution authorizing the county mayor on behalf of Hamilton County, Tennessee, the Health Services Division, operating as the Hamilton County Health Department, to enter into and execute a contract with Renaissance Life and Health Insurance Company of America for the provision of dental services effective November 1st, 2025.
All right, thank you. Moving on. 725-21, please.
Resolution 725-21, a resolution accepting the bids of Tally Construction Company, Inc. and Wright Brothers Construction Company, Inc., for one-year contract unit pricing with the option to renew for three additional one-year terms beginning August 1st, 2025, through July 31st, 2026, for in-place hot mix asphalt services for highway and various county departments, and authorizing the county mayor to sign any contracts necessary to implement this resolution.
725-22, please.
Resolution 725-22, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with Tinker Mott LLC for design of the Gateway Career Technical Education Building renovation for an amount not to exceed $1,593,014.37.
Great. Still no lights, Madam Clerk. Let's keep moving on. 725-23, please.
Resolution 725-23, a resolution to authorize the county mayor to enter into and execute a contract with MTA Architecture and Planning for Design of the Saudi Daisy Middle School Renovations and Additions for an amount not to exceed $1,902,848.
All right. Thank you, ma'am. No lights. Thank you, ma'am. No lights. Last item we have, bottom of the agenda. 725-28, please.
Resolution 725-28, a resolution to appropriate up to $2,250,000 in bond funds to the Hamilton County Schools pending school board approval for the construction of a multipurpose building at McConnell Elementary and a playground partnership project at Hardy Elementary in collaboration with the Trust for Public Land.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner, um, both Robert Sharp and Justin Witt are here and can speak to these or any of the other school projects listed here. But, uh, you're obviously very familiar with one of these two projects and I just thought I'd give the commission a little broader context on these two. Uh, out of the 2024 bond, we've brought all sorts of different projects, uh, most of which are dictated by, uh, school, the school system and, uh, their maintenance departments determination of needs. Some of the projects, uh, have been determining collaboration with our office and with y'all. Uh, this particular project, first I'll speak to the McConnell Elementary gym, uh, is one that, uh, I've talked to Dr. Robertson about going back a couple of years. Commissioner Smith, uh, you've obviously been a big advocate for this project. McConnell is one of the finest elementary schools in Tennessee. Uh, it is, uh, without proper, um, facilities for, uh, kids to do PE for all sorts of exercise activity. And, um, that's been known in the community for a long time. There's a few other schools like that. So this, you know, this is something I think we'd like to emulate. Uh, but it's a good example of honoring one of our great schools with a facility that, uh, they have advocated for, for a long time. School Board Chairman Joe Smith, uh, also a big advocate for this project. And, uh, and they are thrilled at McConnell Elementary, as you know, Commissioner, about this project. And then briefly, a little background on this Hardy Elementary project. I know it's in Dr. Mackey's district. He was briefed about it. Uh, this is, here's the background. I think you guys will appreciate this. The counties had the opportunity to participate in the Trust for Public Land's novel, uh, schoolyard concept, uh, starting at Eastside Elementary. This is something that the Trust for Public Land, um, is, I think, gonna expand. We're having conversations with them about how the county can support them expanding these schoolyards. Uh, they could say it better than I could, but the, the point, as I understand it, and part of the reason we love the concept is that you're taking underutilized school recreational playground, um, facilities, making them available to the public and programming them beyond just, uh, a typical traditional playground so that after hours, uh, they really can be community hubs. Uh, Ladarius Price, who worked for the county, uh, had asked me to go and visit Hardy Elementary after they had a, uh, change in leadership mid-year. Uh, one of the things we noticed was that, uh, the, the basketball goal had been broken down. Uh, their principal specifically asked him, asked us if we could help him get a basketball goal. It's a few months ago. Uh, we did that within a few days, thanks to Matt Foles' help. But it was the beginning of conversations with that principal about whether we could do something really special there in East Chattanooga, you know, the Glass Street community. Uh, because if you're familiar with Hardy Elementary, you know, it sits over there near the Construction Career Center. It sits, uh, adjacent to, uh, a city fire department and nearly adjacent to a city community center. But it's a very modest playground situation. The school's very familiar. I, I'll add this just as a point of, uh, you know, personal interest in the project. It, Hardy Elementary is nearly identical in its design and features to Nolan Elementary, where my kids go to school. And, um, but, but I'd say the, the playgrounds have just not gotten as much love over the years. And so we reached out to Trust Public Land and the school system. And Tucker McLendon, over the last few months, has coordinated what is now gonna be one of the next of these, uh, Trust for Public Land schoolyard opportunities. At Hardy, I think Trust for Public Land's gonna take this $250,000 contribution and, uh, use their imagination and maybe even bring more private resources to bear. But I wanted to give y'all some background on, you know, we, you know, when, when we all, working with y'all, are in, in touch with, uh, even at a, a, a very simple playground level, sometimes playgrounds are talked about dismissively when they become, in communities like this one, uh, places that serve the community 365 days a year. That's really a good investment of public resources. So, a little background on that. Trust for Public Land is represented here and I believe we're just right on the cusp of, uh, the, the great things that we're gonna be able to do in partnership with them.
Thank you, sir. I have a few lights. Commissioner Hollander?
Thank you, Chairman. Mayor, I want to thank you for, for this propos- for these proposals. I think they're, they're both very positive. Let me just say from an academic viewpoint, though, from having spent a lot of years in schools, children do a whole lot better academically when they have some appropriate playtime and appropriate playplace. Whether it's, uh, Sail Creek or Rivermont or McConnell or Hardy, they all need appropriate places to play. And, and, uh, and the academics are much improved when they have, it's not just for playtime. It is for enhancing the academics. And I, I thought about McConnell, such a great facility that is. But if they don't, and when it comes to hard pouring rain, they have to stay inside. It's really difficult to get that appropriate playtime in. And I think you're making some good moves, not just for play, but for academics. And I appreciate that. I, I would, if I could take, I know this is probably not the appropriate time, but, uh, we, we're praying for Commissioner Shipling and his wife, and I think that's very appropriate. Uh, let me just say that prayer is not a partisan issue. Prayer is nonpartisan. I don't care if you're Democrat, Republican, or independent, there is gonna be a prayer time on the steps of the courthouse at 1:30 today. And I would urge anyone that wants to come to, to attend. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Graham?
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. Is the city buying in as well?
We certainly will invite them to participate. This is something that we, um, had initiated in a partnership with the Trust for Public Land. It's obviously a county school facility, but, uh, as, um, the Trust for Public Land, uh, expands on what their vision's gonna be for this site, I think they'd be wise, as they did at Eastside,
Right, it is.
petition the city of Chattanooga to support this project.
I'm very excited. And, and, uh, if, if Hardy turns out as well as the, the plans are for Eastside Elementary. And, and by the way, I'd really like to thank the Trust for Public Land as well. They brought me in and they kept me up to date and they brought me through the whole process. And then I was there for, for the announcement of the school and this is unbelievable. I mean, this is really gonna be good. And, and for Hardy, just like at East, Eastside, to be able to open that up to the, to the public, because those are walkable schools, right? So to open that up to, to the general public, to be able to use it as another playground or another source for soccer or whatever, you know, recreational sports, it's phenomenal. It's absolutely phenomenal. So, um, uh, I applaud Trust for Public Land and I thank them very much, but I think this is a great project. I'll be supporting it.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Mackey?
Thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Mayor, I want to really appreciate, uh, express my appreciation to you and Tucker McLendon for the, for this good effort. And it could not have come any time, uh, one day sooner. People have been, I was in a conversation last week. Some people were saying, you know, it was 4th of July, taxation with representation. People in that neighborhood was talking and saying they don't feel like they're getting their proper share, that they have been taxed and all the goods seem to be going north of the county, Saudi Daisy, et cetera, et cetera. So, this project is gonna be well-received. It's very timely and, and, uh, not a day too soon. So, again, I just want to say thank you.
Yes, sir. Well, and to further clarify a point that, uh, Dr. Hollander made, the principal specifically in talking about the deficiencies of their playground, uh, mentioned, you know, my fourth and fifth grade boys, which, you know, hits home with me. I have a fourth grader going into fifth grade. Like, they're at a point where a typical playground's not cutting anymore. Like, they need open fields and a different type of activation and basketball goals. And so I really appreciated new principal paying attention to what his kids need, specifically advocating. We, we invite principals, as I know all of y'all do, let us know what you need. Like, we can't necessarily do it, but it can be the beginning of a conversation where hopefully we can at some point.
Commissioner Sharp?
Uh, yeah, thank you, Chairman. I, I may be confused here. Is, is there a resolution on here about the $250,000 accepting money for that or something? Or are we just talking about that? I'm... It's the 2.25 million bond fund, school board approves. Okay. That's for McConnell Elementary and a playground. Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I saw, I missed the, I missed section. I get it now. Now, this is great. Um, uh, it, it, these multipurpose rooms, they, we, we need them in every elementary school. I know that there's some out there that still don't have them. Um, and, and, and we need to have them. You know, my, my daughters, they went to Normal Park Elementary. They had PE class on the auditorium stage. It's unsafe. I mean, we, it, it, we basically crowdsourced, uh, the multipurpose room over at Normal Park. Uh, I know the county and Commissioner Graham helped a little bit with some discretionary money. Of course, we don't have those resources anymore, uh, to, to finish that project, um, as it kind of stalled a little bit there at the end. Um, but, you know, this highlights really, um, the disparity in our community. Some schools that have, you know, really strong, well-resourced, um, parental groups can raise funds privately, uh, to invest in these playgrounds and, and other, um, facilities that, you know, once upon a time, the county deemed extra, right? And I think, uh, Commissioner Hollander really hits on it, like, uh, part of elementary education is, is playing. It's a huge part of it, uh, particularly for young boys who can't sit still. I was one of them. In trouble all the time. I couldn't sit still.
Still?
Right. Still am. Still am. I'm fine to, to accept that. But, you know, I am so grateful for the Trust for Public Land. I'm grateful for the, uh, Breakfast Rotary Club that invested in a playground over at Rivermont Elementary. All of these things are great. But this is our job to do this, right? And I'm sorry, you're a little frustrated, but, you know, we talk about it. We, 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 you know, pat ourselves on the back about our great bond rating. We pat ourselves on the back about the lowest property taxes in the history of this county. And then we rely on charity to build playgrounds at our schools. Let's not miss that, right? I'm happy that we get this. This is great and I'm thankful. But we have a responsibility as county government. It, it, this is our role, constitutional obligation to invest in our schools. Um, so, yes, let's, let's thank you, Trust for Public Land. I believe that's who this says. Uh, and other organizations who have done it at other schools. But we need to hold our own feet to the fire and own up to our rock responsibility of investing in these facilities. As a community accounting that we all, 11 of us, represent. Thank you for the time.
Uh, I just want to clarify one thing. What we're talking about today, what's in this resolution, is a $250,000 public investment into Hardy Elementary. There's no announcement about the Trust for Public Land putting money into the project. We've asked them to bring their creativity and ingenuity and maybe additional fundraising capacity to, to help us make that $250,000 very impactful. So I think this is us doing our job, as is the funding of the project at McConnell Elementary.
Dr. Mackey, I'd see your light again, sir.
You do. Um, a moment ago, uh, I was speaking, and I tend to try to keep my head down and my mouth closed, but I was listening to the mayor brag about McConnell. And I just want to also brag about Hardy. When my, uh, when the hard, school first opened, my wife, she taught there and for two years in a row, Hardy was the poster child for school improvement in the state of Tennessee. And so, uh, this money, Mr. Mayor, is gonna be well-spent and it's gonna be well-utilized and it will benefit that whole community. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, sir. I'll see no further lights, so I'll make a couple of comments on my own. Um, gentlemen, thank you for your comments about our school facilities. It's clearly a passion of all of ours and, and I'm very excited about this project, as you can imagine. Commissioner Sharp, I, I dare say I know better than anybody, the situation over there at Normal Park. My wife taught on that stage, um, and often got booted off the stage so that they could boot soccer balls around, uh, in the auditorium. So, uh, very familiar, um, even familiar with kids falling off that stage and getting injured, to your point. So it was, um, not a great situation and, uh, I was very fortunate to also be involved in raising that money to build the playground long before we even had an opportunity to build a gym over there. So, uh, my, my kids went through that as well and, when my wife was teaching there and, and they were younger. So, very familiar and couldn't agree more that this is something that we need to be looking at in every school, uh, that we have in Hamilton County. Tucker, thank you so much for the work you've done on this. We've talked about it for a while and I know you were spearheading it and I know I reached out and I wore you out quite a bit on updates. Uh, really appreciate your work. Gentlemen, from the school system, thank you for all of your work as well and making sure that we can get to this point out of McConnell. And, and Mr. Mayor in particular, you know, you and I met together out at McConnell and did a walk through that school. Um, and walking into classrooms that were repurposed for kids to be able to play inside of instead of learning, just reemphasize the need for this project and how long it's been needed. Uh, and so the fact that they'll be able to move around outside of a very small, constrained classroom space, um, to do real physical education will be great for all of the students out there. So everybody that has had a part of this, thank you so much for, for helping make, uh, make this a reality. So, that is seeing no further lights. That is our last item. Um, we stand adjourned.